Orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30a, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting in the Carver Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that individuals who would like to view or listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by watching us live by turning into Comcast Channel 15, our government access channel. If despite our best efforts, we're not able to provide real-time access due to technical difficulties in recording or other comprehensive record of the proceedings of the meeting will be made available online as possible. I might suggest that we, let's see here. Yeah, if we may want to, if we're not talking, we may want to mute ourselves to avoid too much background noise. Like if the dog start barking, Bob, you can hit the mute button. Alright, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
May I ask, before we start, if we could have a moment of silence for the passing of Clark Griffith, a man that did so much for this town who just recently passed?
Yes, I think that would be appropriate, thank you for mentioning that, Alan. Thank you. And our thoughts and prayers go out to Clark's family at this time. We're scheduled to have now a discussion and possible vote on offering the position of town administrator to one of the interviewed candidates. I just wanted to say a few brief words before we get into it. It's hard to believe that it's only been a month since this all started. We had just come to terms with Mr. Milonowski's departure agreement with the town. We were looking to hire a new town administrator, anticipating town meeting to be out of the way and the elections to be just a couple of weeks after that. Instead, in a short month, we find ourselves in the middle of a national pandemic, town meeting and elections months likely away, trying to anticipate the future effects of the pandemic on our employees and on our budget. Our search for a replacement for Mr. Milonowski cannot help but be affected by these changed circumstances. I have said at every meeting that we've had in discussing the search for a new town administrator that we were open to all situations, internal versus external candidate, short-term versus long-term, part-time versus full-time. Through all this time that we've been looking into this, the health and welfare of our residents has come first and is also a consideration we must take into account in choosing a new town administrator who needs to provide the leadership while our public safety officials look to care and support for our residents. With that, I'm going to go around the room and ask each member of the board their thoughts at this time on the town administrator search, and then we will see what action, if any, the board would like to make. Mr. Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few thoughts. First of all, I think probably like my, the rest of my colleagues on the board, I've gotten a lot of calls from people with their thoughts and opinions on this whole search, and I appreciate everyone's input. I think certainly if we had known what was going to happen with the whole pandemic when we discussed Mr. Milonowski's leaving, we might have made some different decisions, but we didn't. No one can look in the future. We didn't know what was going to happen with the whole COVID-19 situation, and that has certainly impacted, I think, certainly my thoughts on this whole situation. When I look at a candidate for town administrator, public safety is very, very important to me, and I listen very closely to their thoughts there. I'm also want someone who's familiar with the town, and I think that, I think the more familiar they are with the town of Carver, the better that is for them, so I put a lot of weight on that as well. I think as far as whether we do an interim or a non-interim, I mean, the word interim in and of itself is pretty vague. There's no, there's no time period there. So I think, and I think you're right, Mr. Chairman, we've been pretty open about what we were going to do and left our options pretty open. And I think, I think I speak for all of us when I say that no matter what we do, whether we agree or disagree, I think we're all doing what we think is best for the town, and ultimately, that's our charge as a member of the select board, and to the best of our ability, we're going to do that. So I guess those are my thoughts.
Brian, you have the.
Ron, I can't hear you. Oh, God, old, old people with computers. Ms. Julins?
Thank you, Ron. As you pointed out, we are in the middle of a pandemic, and my feeling is that they're just largely due to that, but for other reasons as well. We have, we have some criteria that need to be met in our next town administrator, and one of them is we need someone who knows how to run a town, who has real experience doing that. The second thing is we need someone who really understands our community, and I believe in particular, someone who understands how our public safety departments work so that this person can really hit the ground running. I too have had people come to me, the way Mark has, and I appreciate their concerns. I totally agree that I think we're all trying to do the right thing here. It's a hard situation. But I have had the opportunity to talk to all three of our public safety chiefs, and since the interviews, and all three of them have given me permission to say their opinions. If you think this is an appropriate time for me to let you know how they feel, I would be happy to do that.
Just I'll chime in on that, Sarah. I'm just saying that from my perspective, I too have talked to them, but I think that'd be better when we start to get in the actual discussion of the candidates and stuff.
Sure, no, that's fine. So my criteria basically are someone who knows how to run a town, has had that experience, and enough of it to be able to do what needs doing here. Someone who knows our community in particular, and particularly our public safety department. Someone, they don't have to kind of educate, someone who can hit the ground running. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Sarah. Bob?
Yeah, I've thought about this, and like you guys all have. Other people have reached out to me and talked to other people within the town of what they want. I didn't go to any other town officials. My feeling is, is we have a strong management team for the town, and I think that they running their departments, they do it well enough that whoever we pick will mold right into that, and I don't think any of them actually said they would make any changes or anything and let them do their job, and that's their job. But the candidates we had, I mean, I think they were a good group of candidates. They all have their own positives and negatives, and I mean, I boiled mine down to two. So, and I still haven't decided as of yet. I was kind of going to see what everyone else here has their opinions on as such, but thank you.
We can't hear you, Ron.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Dunham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As my fellow board members have already stated, Mark especially, I think he did very well with that. This is a challenging time. I think when we all started this process, we figured, no problem, we can get an interim in, part-time, full-time. I don't think it really mattered because we'd had town meeting already out of the way and the elections soon to follow, so it's going to go fairly smoothly. Unfortunately, this national, worldwide pandemic has kind of thrown a monkey wrench into it, and I think it forces us to move at a faster pace. I think it adds more urgency to doing the right thing, but I agree, whoever we get is going to have to be able to do, go right at it, full-time, right off the get-go. Not only do we have our citizens to worry about, but we have budgets, and this is going to be impacting our budget. I am more inclined for long-term because, you know, it doesn't make sense to me because I know somebody, some people have the feeling, well, interim, well, that can't be more than three or four months. Well, you get three or four months from basically starting mid-April. Now you're getting into already mid-August, mid-September, and you're right into the next budget season, and there's going to have to be a lot of adjustments on the fly. So I agree wholeheartedly that whoever we pick has to hit the ground running. I agree, has to have very close knowledge and understanding of how our three legs of our emergency management work, EMS, police, and fire. It's one thing to say, well, yeah, I've kind of worked with them before, but they have to be able to go ahead, and plus, whoever we have, we select, has to have the trust of our emergency managers, and our emergency managers will have to trust that person because they're going to have to work very closely together right off the bat, and I'd also throw financing on that. So I think we've got a serious decision to make this morning, a couple of minutes. Not only who we're going to select, but for how long do we want to go ahead and offer a contract for? So I think those are the things we've got to kind of work on this morning, and hopefully, we can all come together. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. And I agree with everything that's been said. I think from my perspective in thinking about this, especially over the last 48 hours, I've had a number of conversations with Mr. Milonowski about what's going to have to be done with the town relative to the budget, relative to employees, discussions that are going to have to take place, some of which are not going to be easy. And the fact that we have literally a life and death pandemic situation taking place has ultimately affected my thought process about which of the candidates I believe would be best to fit in. I think if we were in the position where none of the pandemic was taking place and we were simply moving forward, town meeting was over, which is going to be over next week, the election was coming up at the end of the month, that I might be in a different place. But I would be, I definitely been, my thought process has been affected because we just don't know. In a perfect world, this could be over May 4th, but I think we all believe that the governor's probably going to be extending through the month of May, possibly into June. The idea of the next time 300 people can gather together at town meeting is, it may well be a ways off. So that has heavily influenced my thought process. So with that, I guess I would simply ask, what is the pleasure of the board? I guess you can all unmute now.
Okay, I'll jump in. First off, maybe we should handle and tackle on how long we're going to want an individual for. My thinking on this whole thing, I think we should be offering a minimum of a one-year term. My idea is be a one-year term with a talent option for two more years. Rationale for that is, one, it gets through the whole thing and get it through our next budget year because a lot of decisions are going to have to be made throughout the coming year, not for three or four months and bring somebody else new in. Also, we have to be able to make it worthwhile for the candidate, whoever it is, to go ahead and accept a contract. I don't think you're going to be able to, anybody that's worth their salt is going to just accept a six-month interim or something like that with no guarantee of anything beyond six months. They're going to want some sense of stability, I would think. So I would be strongly in favor of a longer as opposed to a shorter. You know, something that probably falls without, outside of the interim category and definitely full-time. Right now, we have too much going on with the pandemic. We're in the middle of building the police station. We still have to go ahead and be working on the Route 58 Montello interchange. That just can't stop, that planning and work still has to be going on. We have to put in the water line on Plymouth Street. So we have a lot of things that have to be done, and I don't think it can be accomplished with a part-time, quote, interim town administrator. That's my thoughts.
Yeah, I guess I wouldn't disagree, but I probably, it would depend on who we're thinking of that would affect how comfortable I'd be with the length of term.
Mr. Chairman, I share many of Selectman Dunham's thoughts, but I do think that depending on who we choose, we may want a little flexibility in how long we choose to offer them a contract for. But I do think that we need someone to at least get us through the next budget season and have some, some bit of a stability, certainly for a year or somewhere in that vicinity.
I agree. The one year I like, I like with a one-year extension instead of a two-year. Like I said, it gives us that option to go over for another year and make our decisions at that point.
Well, remember that any extension would be at the board's, it would be a town extension, not a candidate. So we have an opportunity depending on how the, you know, how we thought the candidate was performing.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm going to go out on a limb here. I think that we need, that the quality of person that we need will probably need more security than just one year. I think it needs to be a three-year contract, get us through this pandemic, address all those projects Alan was talking about. Those are going to take a while, and get us through at least two budget seasons. We don't want to dump this on the next board either. We don't need to be doing this twice. I think we need a permanent, full-time, and I think we need to offer this person something that they can count on for a while, so we can actually keep them.
Mr. Chairman, I think that, I think we've basically rapidly reached a consensus that we're all looking, saying, agree, at least a year, and it's just how much longer we're going to go. But I think we've gotten through the part that really, not really an interim in the, quote, typical interpretation of interim, but that we need somebody full-time, minimum of a year. Now we have to make the right candidate, and then we can, after we select a candidate, we can go back to figuring out how long we want to make the offer for.
I agree.
All right, I'll start this off. I'll make a motion that we offer the position to Jack Healy.
Is there a second? The motion fails at lack of a second.
Mr. Chairman, rather than just making a motion for one individual person, perhaps each of us can go ahead and say who our top two, one or two candidates are, and then after that point, we all hear each other's opinions on that, and then offer a motion up to who to go ahead and offer the position to.
That's fine. Why don't you start, Mr. Dunham?
All right, after sitting through, and I went back and actually reviewed and watched it all over again, the four candidates, and I do want to thank them all for applying. My bottom, my top two are actually Mr. LaFond and Tom, I can't remember his last name, the gentleman of Born. I thought, okay, they both went ahead and did a lot of research on the town. Obviously, they had some very good points of, you know, where we're at, especially on our budget process. I like Brad, but I think he's, when he came across, I know he sent us a follow-up email, but I don't think he's really sure whether we want, you know, whether that position of town administrator is a good fit for him or not. In another time, I could say, yeah, I think we should give them a shot and let them go. But these times, again, I keep going back to, they have to hit the town runnings. They have to know how to run a town, and they really need the experience of it. Mr. Healy, I was, you know, nice gentleman, but I was not as impressed with him as I was with the other two. So right now, my top two, and if we want to discuss them more, if you want me to pick a number one, I can. But right now, I'd just like to say my top two are Mr. LaFond and Tom.
Yeah, and I would just suggest that we focus on the top two and not critique the performance of anybody, you know, anybody else. Bob, I guess go back to you. You mentioned Jack, so did you have a second choice?
My second one was Brad Brothers. I like to hire from within that we have, I gave him an opportunity. One of the things I was going to present is that if we pick Jack Healy, that see if Brad wanted to do an internship with him to kind of figure out if he really wants to go that route or to offer it out again. That was my opinion.
All right, thank you. Sarah?
Well, I don't have a top two. I, when I went into this, when we went into this whole interview process, I was really skeptical as to who I would choose, although apparently a lot of people already knew. I'm not sure how they knew that, but those were the rumors. My feeling from the interview is that Rick is the one who meets all these criteria that we need, and after discussions with the three public safety officials, they have all told me that they strongly support Rick LaFond, that he meets these criteria. This is, this is who we need right now in this situation, and for a long enough period of time that we can actually keep him here. I have to, I have to say, our fire chief really stressed, full-time, and, excuse me, full-time, and he said he strongly supports Rick LaFond. He really wanted us to nail it down so that we could keep Rick here. His concern is if we have a short, short contract, that we'll lose him. And our EMS, and that was our chief Weston's comment. Chief Walsh, our EMS and emergency operations chief, said he's 100% behind Rick. And our police chief, Mark Dufly, said he supports what the two chiefs say. So to me, that's an incredibly compelling argument, and that's my position.
Thank you. Mr. Townsend?
Thank you. To me, my top two, and I do have one I favor over the other, but I think Rick LaFond brings a lot to the table. And I also think that Brad Brothers, for me, although he wouldn't be necessarily a full-time town administrator, he is in the town full-time, and I think his familiarity with the town overcomes a lot of that. So for me, my top two are Mr. LaFond and Mr. Brothers, and I can expand on that if you want, but I, those are my top two.
And those would be my same top two. As I said in my opening remarks, if this pandemic hadn't hit, I think in my mind that I would really be giving serious consideration to the idea of Brad coming in and doing it. I think he'd give us a level of, what would you call it? It's someone we're familiar with, the rest of the town's familiar with, he's been here a while. But having never been a town administrator, and I know he knows the finances cold, but having never been a town administrator with what it looks like we're going into over the next six months to a year, because even once this pandemic's over, we're going to be in a recovery period with the town finances, with our employees, with funding items, so that, you know, I think that that's what I refer to that made a difference with me. So with that, does anybody want to make another motion?
I'm making a motion to reappoint Rick LaFond as town administrator.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I personally, when he left the town, he didn't leave us, in my opinion, in a good shape, and things did change, and I think that having someone new come in to look at the town a way it is running now would be a better option with a new, fresh set of eyes. I think that would be a better option.
And I guess I would reply to that because I know that some of the criticism that's been directed towards Mr. LaFond was the financial condition of the town at the time that he left. And I think what needs to be kept in mind that there are three things influencing that. One was, we were still in recovery from the financial crisis of 2008, 2009. Also, the state had cut back on funding for the schools, so the monies were not available, and we were starting the process of having to shift money onto the backs of taxpayers to make up, to fund the schools. And it also depends on what board you're working with at the time and what their financial goals are because the town administrator works for the board and follows the instructions of the board. So that, I think to some extent, pinning the financial situation of the town on Mr. LaFond at the time that he left is unfair given those circumstances. So we did, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead, Alan.
Now you go ahead, sir, your vice chair.
Thank you. I was just going to say, were it, were it another time, we were not in the middle of this pandemic, I'd probably be strongly supporting Brad, but I just think with the unusual circumstances that we're in, and you're right, Mr. Chairman, this is not going to end when the governor lifts the moratorium on public grouping and things like that. This is going to continue for a while. I don't think any of us know how long. I don't think any of us know where this is going to go, and I think we just need a, experience in this particular time is more valuable than it is in other times, I think. And that led me to my support of Mr. LaFond.
And obviously, Mr. Chair, if I may, my not having a second candidate is no reflection on, is no personal reflection on any of the candidates. It was all the criteria that I mentioned at the very beginning.
Mr. Dunham?
Yeah, I can strongly support Rick. I think we as a board, and he as a potential, you know, if he accepts a position, has to understand and be prepared for a certain segment of the town, to, of the voters, to be resistant to that. I mean, I've talked to a lot of people, like you have, Sarah. I've also made the mistake of going on social media. So that's already started a little bit, but was, but that's fine. People have the right to, you know, say what they feel, and at least on social media and Facebook, their name is on it. So I have to respect that people are willing to voice their opinion with their name. What I did not respect was, and I think we've all got one of these in the mail the other day, no return address, basically anonymous with an article on one of the candidates. That, I'm sorry, I just have no respect for that. If you have, you know, want to bring that to our attention, I think all of us were already aware of it, but still, something like that, our email addresses are all easily accessible on the town website, or go to social media and, you know, put your name on it. So while I'm not, have no intention, you know, I'm doing what I think is best for the town, and with this, you know, still with everything, has to hit the ground running, I would strongly support Rick because I know he could do the job. So he's going to have my support in this vote.
All right, if there's no further discussion, we'll come back and talk about length afterwards. But let's take the vote on the motion made and seconded to appoint Rick LaFond, the new town administrator. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mr. Townsend, you had a thought?
I wonder if the board would, now that we've taken an initial vote, I wonder if the board would. I, I wonder if the board would, would, now that we've taken an initial vote, I wonder if the board would reconsider and consider making the motion unanimous, just as a gesture of support for the, for the town administrator, the incoming town administrator. Just a thought.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Second. Further discussion?
He wasn't on my pick of any of the, my top two. What I would like to see is if Brad is interested in coming on as an on a basis to turn around and see how the job is running. Also, if that would be an option.
You're suggesting that if Mr. LaFond is hired, that we try to bring Brad in in some capacity to sort of as a, to help him develop professional skills as a town administrator?
Yes.
Okay. And, and personally, personally, I would be supportive of that as well.
Mr. Chairman, in regards to the vote that, you know, the motions before the board, I'll bring you back to when Mr. Milonowski was hired. The initial vote to hire him was not unanimous, but the majority, there was a majority to hire him. And they went ahead and then had a second vote for, to offer the chance, so it could be a unanimous vote to show support for the new person coming in. Because it's going to be a challenge for them. And I think they need to have the support of the board. So I would go along with the motion that, you know, that Mark made and Sarah seconded.
All right. And again, I just want to say that I do support Bob's suggestion at working with Brad.
Can I, can I make that as a friendly amendment to your motion? That we offer that out to Brad for professional development?
Yeah. Are you comfortable adding that, Mark? Obviously, we're not committing to anything other than trying to work, work something out with him.
Okay. Because I was going to say we'd have to, obviously, this would be a position we don't currently have. We'd have to come up with contract, compensation.
Well, I, I don't know how, I don't know what you had in mind, Bob, but I, you know, I don't know how formal or informal it might be. But I think the intention is to provide someone like Brad with the opportunity to get involved on a professional basis. And we'd leave that to the new town administrator and Brad to work out.
I, I would, I would say it's that, but I don't think we need to have that in a form of a motion. I think that Brad has a good enough working relationship with Meg already in the town, on the town side, that, you know, that's something we would, I would hope in the new town administrator would encourage and that Mr. Neef would go along with. But that's something that they're going to have to work out as opposed to putting it in the form of a motion that says, okay, we're going to do this. You know, that's something they're going to have to work out over time.
I also don't, I think Bob's idea though was simply to, to make the offer. The details need to be worked out.
Bob's in a motion.
Yeah, I'm not against the offer. I just, I hate to make the vote on appointing a new town administrator or offering a contract with a, with another condition on there. I'd like to see a, a clean offer. And I'm not against Bob's idea. I just, I don't know if I want to make that part of.
All right. Can I ask, can I ask if we have a consensus? Do we have a consensus that we would like the new town administrator to move forward and try to develop a professional training, relationship with Mr. Brothers?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, I agree.
All right. Motion has been made for reconsideration of the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 The ayes have, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Now, we just, we just reconsidered the vote to appoint Rick LaFond, town administrator.
That's correct. Yeah, and it was unanimous. Now, the next question is term, the term of the contract. He's already given us his salary parameters. So the next would be, what did we want to talk about? Basically, I think I heard everybody sort of was in agreement. Basically, the June 30th, 2021. The question is, did we want to do anything beyond that or add some options? Bob seemed to be okay adding the option for an extra year. Sarah suggested an option for an extra two years. Sarah also suggested maybe going two years. So I guess a little discussion in terms of the length of the contract.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I heard you say a three-year contract for Rick?
I, I did. And, and that, that was based, yeah, I did say that. And I know it was going out on a limb because everyone else was saying one year, but I think it's really important for us to listen to our chiefs. And they, they've all supported the idea of it being more than a short-term contract. And, and in fact, Chief Weston said three years. He said, you need to grab him and hold on to him. I have to respect that. So that's why I put that forward.
No, and I can, I understand that. And believe me, I know, because Craig told me the same thing when I had a brief discussion with him. I know I originally was thinking one year, but there has to be a sense of some security, although in, you know, in that job, there's no long-term security where you're talking years and years and years. I, I would be, hold on.
I was just going to say, I think Mass General Law, one section of it at any rate, says it should be three years. And, and, and that also avoids having, having the next board have to do this all over again. And the chiefs sit on pins and needles, wondering, you know. I mean, it's just stability.
And if you let me go ahead and finish, I was going to say, I have, I'm coming around, you know, listen to everybody. And I know, Bob, you're not going to be, I know, I can understand where you're coming from. But to me, it had to be, to even begin to entice, it had to be minimum of two years. So either a two or a three, I can support fully.
And, and I guess I, 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 I agree with Mr. Dunham. I, I, I'd like to leave a little flexibility here in the negotiations with Mr. LaFond. I don't know how comfortable I feel going out three years. Just because we didn't initially start this search looking for a, a permanent, I don't think, town administrator. I, I know we left our options open, but initially I, I didn't think that's where we were going.
We didn't have endemic either.
I don't know. And you're absolutely right, Sarah. And that, I think that's changed all our thoughts on, on, on where we are in this situation. Certainly has changed mine. But I'm, I'm, I'm flexible on the number of years.
I guess I could go beyond a year, but I wouldn't want to go three. If we want to do two with an option for the board to add a year after that at the board's discretion. I could be comfortable with that. I would not want to go be, I would not want to go beyond two. What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we offer Mr. LaFond a contract of two years with a one-year option at the end, town option.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I, I still feel that a one-year contract with an extension afterwards is appropriate. Not knowing what's going to happen over the next year or two years, that we do have that option for a new board to come in. And maybe they want to go for a new town administrator search after the year. Who knows? That would be up to the new board, when and if it's ever put out to elections. But no matter what, I think just a one-year contract with a, a one-year extension is sufficient. And it can be negotiated further.
I just want to make, this is just a, a gut feeling I would have if I was applying, you know, going into a new position, working on a contract. The board, even if we decide on the two-year plus one, we may have to come back for another vote if the candidates really insisted on three years. Because let's face it, the, the applicant or the appointee now does get a say in it. So it's what we can work out. Also, it also depends on how we work out the contract. We may find ourselves, because of the financial situation, we might have to really make it a more escalating contract than we normally would. We may be facing budget shortfalls for the first year. And also, we still have two years of our, of Mr. Milonowski's contract to factor in there too. So we may not be able to offer as much as we would, would normally do on the first year of a contract. So we have to be prepared that it may have to be an escalating type contract. So whatever we decide, we may have to come back and have another vote because, just depending on how the negotiations go.
And I do, I do want to remind you that when we asked all the candidates their range, I think Mr. Guarino was looking to be paid at Mr. Milonowski's current level. Mr. LaFond indicated 160,000. And then we really didn't have clarity on the other, well, I guess Mr., Mr. Healy was about 55,000, I believe. So.
I think he said that's the most he could make. So.
Right. So did we have, did we have a motion on that? I, I, on, on the two years?
Yes, if we have a motion.
And if I could put in my two cents, I, I'm willing to go along with the two-year, but I'm, I'm very, very concerned that that Mr. LaFond won't accept the two years. And, and I think that would be a real tragedy, actually. So.
Well, that's why, that's why I said the board has to realize that if we make this offer, we may have to come back for another vote if he does not accept that offer, but offers something else beyond that. So it's not just because we're saying, just because we're saying two years with an optional one, doesn't mean that we, you know, we can't come back, depending on how the negotiations go, to go ahead and have to go out to a longer term.
That's right. We may have to. We'll have to, we'll have to see where it goes.
All right. Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. The next step is I'd like to have two of you appointed to meet with Mr. LaFond to create a contract. Any volunteers to do that?
I'd like to be part of that group.
What was that, Bob?
I'd like to.
All right. All right. I, I think it would be good for Bob, because Bob spent a lot of time, you know, I don't know that we're going to put, you know, change, you know, we've got the bylaws to deal with. But, you know, Bob, I think, has some constructive thoughts on it. And again, we can't really buy, go far from the, from what the bylaws say. But at the same time, I, I, you know, I think, especially since Bob did not vote in favor, I think it's important that he be represented as one of the bargaining team. And who else? Everyone else, was it? Or?
I think everyone, yeah.
How about, how about the vice chair? How about the vice chair and Bob working together?
That would be my recommendation.
All right.
Fine with the vice chair.
All right. How about a motion that, that Mr. Belvin and Mr. Townsend contact Mr. LaFond as quickly as possible? Because ideally, if we can get a, take a vote next week on a final contract, so that Mr. LaFond, if he accepts the offer, is ready to step in because Michael's contract expires on April 17th. And we're going to need Mr. LaFond to get up and running as quickly as possible.
I make a motion that Mr. Townsend, Mr. Belvin, reach out to Mr. LaFond and initiate contract negotiations.
Is there a second?
Chuck him.
Further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have. All right. Thank you all. I know that this has been been a challenge for all of us. And as I say, it's, it's incredible to look back when we started out, after arriving at the details of Mr. Milonowski's departure agreement. And then what's happened, what's transpired since. And again, I just want to stress that what we did here today in terms of hiring a new town administrator is one thing. But let's keep in mind, oh, by the way, I do want to make one good news announcement. I got a text while I was sitting here. I had a cousin, Joe, that's been in intensive care at Beth Israel in Boston for the last two weeks. He's getting sent home today. His fever, his fever broke. The AFib, that I guess is fairly common. He had the malaria drug, which I guess can trigger AFib. It's all under control. So his family's getting him home today. So it really, when you have a family member touched by that, it really brings home seriousness of what we're dealing with here. We've been lucky in Carver so far. And I, I, you know, my, my, my goodwill goes out to my cousin, and I'm just glad to see that. So with that, we now will bring Mr. Milonowski in.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I request a five-minute break before we go on to the rest of our meeting?
I think that's fair. I think you might have beat Sarah to the punch on that. All right. You may want to mute your mics while we're gone. We'll come back in five minutes. Meanwhile, Michael, why don't you do what you can to join in?
Same guy, Bob, or somebody new?
What just happened?
It's Mr. Belvin.
Well, I know that. Is that, is that Paul Kelly again, Bob?
Nope, this is another one from Carver.
It's another singer from Carver. Do we know this person, Bob?
He's a teacher for our town.
All right. We'll do the reveal at the end again. All right. Let's get going again. All right, folks, we have Mr. Milonowski pulled in. Thank you for waiting on that. We obviously saw the results of the vote. We're now going to move to the town administrator update. Financial position of the town from the pandemic. So Michael, I'll turn it over to you to walk through what you want to bring us up to speed on.
Great, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations, board, on selecting a candidate. You had two good top qualified candidates. And Rick will serve the town well. I've already been in touch with Rick. And we're going to try to catch up next week. And so I can update him on a bunch of the finance items and everything to make the transition as smooth as possible. Just to, keep in mind that, that to the extent that you can, having a contract executed with him by the 17th would avoid any type of period where there wasn't someone that could sign off on TA stuff. So I just encourage you to get that done next week and get that executed so that as of the 17th, he can legally sign documents as the TA.
I think, I think that's the intention. It'll be for Bob and Mark to try to make that work.
Yes, we will.
Thank you. We're best.
Secondly, before I get into the budget thing, I just want to talk about a couple of dates. I do think we should have another meeting next week. It looks like Bob and Mark will need to bring one back to you anyway. Just to finalize some additional budget items. So we'll need to look at a date for that. I'm also being advised by town council that we should tentatively pick a town meeting date, just so he can lock it in. As you know, all the town meetings are being condensed and we don't want to lock up his schedule. So I'm going to propose for the board to consider as a tentative town meeting date, June 2nd, which is the first Tuesday of the month, or June 9th. That'll give the three weeks if the thing gets lifted on the 4th. If it does, great. If it doesn't, you can redo these. But I just want to lock in some dates with him, just in case those dates happen.
Why don't we, I, I would lean towards June 9th, give us a little extra, extra room. And just remember that basically, our, our rule of thumb was that town meeting would take place three weeks after the pandemic was lifted and the, or the restrictions were lifted and elections would be a month afterwards. So that's still what we're sort of working with, but. And um, elections will be a month afterwards. So that's still what we're sort of working with, but um, again, if we, if we hear that it looks like the directive is going to be lifted, we certainly can meet, meet. And so I would say that whatever else we need to add, uh, assuming uh, Bob and Mark can bring a, uh, an accept, what they feel is an acceptable contract offer back to us next week, we can tag on to that meeting any additional items.
Yep. I, I would agree that I think June ninth is a, is a good date, allowing as much time as possible.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we have town meeting on June ninth.
Check him.
Further discussion?
Um, with a possible second date available in case uh, we have it. Uh, can we look at a Saturday, possibly doing a Saturday town meeting?
Do we have a, does, is the bylaw specific on the day of the week?
Uh, The bylaw is not specific on the day of the week. It's just that it has to happen before the election. Um, I mean.
Do you suggest that we go with the ninth and then go with the Saturday as the backup date, Bob?
Yeah, as a thirteenth.
All right. I think that's fair.
I meant my emotion to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I meant my second.
All right. Motion is uh, to hold town meeting on June ninth. God willing, and backup date of Saturday, June thirteenth. Uh, any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
All right. I just sent that to town council. They're aware of that. Okay, um, obviously, uh, what we're trying to do is put the town in the best financial position um, as we make this transition. And uh, when we have our meeting next week, you know, we should be in a position to wrap up um, uh, all but maybe one or two of the articles. Um, at, at least from a financial standpoint. So let me talk a little bit about um, the, the state of our financial affairs, um, as has been discussed with Meg Lemay and myself. Um, as we all know, the town is in a very good position uh, structurally to weather a storm. And that's why we have what some call the rainy day fund. Technically, it's our general stabilization fund. And uh, Mark, that was just a tickle, correct?
Just a tickle.
I don't want to quarantine you for fourteen days.
No, just a tickle. I've got my water bottle right here.
Fair enough. Um, so with that, um, you know, the town through its financial policies, you know, has put, put aside seven and a half percent of our revenue, which, which has never existed before. Uh, with that, we can cobble together some additional funds and I'll talk later in the agenda about what the uh, finance, I'm sorry, what the conservation commission voted unanimously to transfer five hundred thousand dollars out of their fund to go into the general stabilization fund. What this really means is that we have a little over potentially, if we can get that five hundred thousand dollars transferred through a governor's bill, we're going to have about a little over four million dollars. Now, what that equates to, so what does that number mean? Well, it looks like a big number, but in reality, it's not necessarily that big of a number. And um, and here's why I say that, is that when we look at our annual budget for the town, what has been approved for the town and, and so forth, we are looking at a number of about forty four million dollars is what our total spend is. So you're about ten percent of what the operating budget, budget is. If no revenue came in, in essence, it's about, you know, one month of operation cost at our current spend rate. Um, so although that's a lot, that's more than, you know, probably half the towns, if not more, have available. It's still not a panacea. It's still not going to allow for blind operations without looking at expenses. Um, so again, very good news, but it's something that I'm just cautioning you about. It's, it's, it's not a panacea. So that being said, we are anticipating uh, revenue shortfalls coming in. So as you know, the, the town, just like the state, is required to have a balanced budget. We put our revenue projections together at the beginning of the year and then at the end of the year, we have to make sure that revenue comes in. And if it comes in as we anticipated, great. If our expenses are down as we sometimes hope, the residual of that is left over is free cash. Um, you know, this budget was tighter that we put together and we didn't anticipate having a lot of free cash this year. Um, and, and I don't anticipate seeing a lot of that this year, if any. Um, and I say that because our revenue is going to be going down in several areas. One, and the biggest one, we don't know, and that is state aid. And uh, although the um, there was supposed to be a, a revenue reconciliation meeting last week with the governor, the Speaker of the House and um, the Senate President, that meeting had to get canceled. That's the consolidator, uh, revenue forecast that they complete their budget upon. Um, hopefully that, that has, has or will be taking place shortly. Um, with that, the state does have its own rainy day fund and uh, many are hoping that the state won't cut back town state aid in May and June. However, keep in mind, the state also has its essential services that it has to do. It has a lot of money in its rainy day fund, but it's also percentages of the budget. It's not like they can just fund the budget for years without tapping into that. So we're assuming that there is going to be some cut in state aid in May or June. We don't know what that's going to be. In addition to that, um, we also are anticipating that there's going to be less building permits that are going to be drawn. Less, so that reduces down our revenue. Obviously, we know the restaurants are closed down, so our meals tax is going to be going down. Now, that has about a ninety day lag. So that's, that's, that's going to impact us in more or less in July um, than it is right now. And um, and, and also excise tax, motor vehicle excise tax. People right now are not necessarily going out and buying new cars where, you know, we secure a little over one point two million dollars a year in excise tax. Uh, that's going to drop. So my point being is there is going to be some revenue drops. Hence, that's why the spending freeze was implemented um, several weeks ago to focus on just essential services that need to be done by the town. And that's been adhered to by all departments. Obviously, public safety and essential services need to continue. Uh, but uh, we, we do have that cut down. Um, and, and in focusing on FY twenty budget, the one that's going to end this June, is that that spending freeze is going to help. We are using less utilities in some of the school buildings and in town hall. Uh, but we all still have, we're using less fuel for the school buses. Um, there's going to be some money left over in the school that the superintendent and business manager, you know, are, are reserving because they're not spending it, uh, just as like that with the town. Um, so overall, I think we're going to be okay as we get through FY twenty. I think it's going to be a challenge. Um, but one of the things that we're looking to do is where we have essential employees and non-essential employees is we're looking to offer um, voluntary furloughs to um, to these non-essential employees. Now, let me define what a furlough is versus a layoff. Technically, they're one in the same from an unemployment standpoint. So if someone is furloughed or someone is laid off, in either case, they can collect their unemployment plus the additional six hundred dollars given by the federal government that's available right now. I'm not going to go into too much more detail on that, but there is significant funds available to people uh, should they choose to go for a voluntary um, furlough. Now, the other difference with the furlough versus a uh, layoff is the furlough is we have every intention of hiring these employees back. Once the revenue comes back, once the COVID nineteen is lifted, once we can get back to a normal state. And with that, in my conversations with the unions, yeah, particularly these would mostly be SEI union and predominantly is where these non-essential employees will be coming from, is that their request was, and this is from SEIU in Boston, is that people maintain their seniority, which they would, and if they're receiving benefits, they would. So to define furlough, and everybody defines furlough differently, is that A, the intent that's voluntary. B, it's going to be um, temporary until we can hire these people back. C, they maintain their seniority. D, they maintain their benefits as if they were working here. And, and um, and again, they would get full unemployment and then sometimes that actually may be a larger amount of money than what they're currently making, probably in most, if not all cases. So we're doing that from the standpoint that um, it just makes financial sense and we're doing it as a voluntary program. Uh, now, when I say voluntary, how are we going to do that? Um, we, it's only going to be for non-essential employees. And again, those are classified um, already that we've done. Um, those are generally people that are not coming to town hall. Um, or to the library at this particular point. Um, and what we do is put a list out and see who is interested in volunteering to, to accept that role. And once they do, then, then we would just make that the, the furlough piece. So again, this is kind of preempting. We don't know how long it's going to take for the revenue to come back. We know it's not going to be instantaneous. Um, you know, our hope throughout this whole process is that the rest of FY twenty and, and twenty-one are the blip years. And then by FY twenty-two, things get back to a normal state. Um, these voluntary furloughs from our state of mind that we're looking at right now would probably be something around a ninety day period. Um, again, that would be consistent with what the unemployment benefits are with that additional six hundred dollars um, that, that's allowed there. So that's kind of what we're looking to do as it relates to um, FY twenty. And um, and uh, let's see. So I just want to, I'm just looking at the agenda to make sure I covered everything before I get into FY twenty-one. Uh, revenue shortfall, yes. So before I get to FY twenty, does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns, issues on anything that I've stated to date? Um, I do want to say, and I think I said in the beginning, is my intent is to catch up with um, Mr. LaFond, um, you know, sometime next week and continue to work with him. He and I have been in correspondence. Um, so that, um, again, I think he's a good choice for the town. I think he'll be able to carry this, this forward once we, you know, update him with all the proper stuff.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair? Oh, you might want to unmute yourself there, Bob.
Go ahead. You beat me again.
That's all right. So I just wanted to um, re- reiterate what I heard you say, Michael, and that was that it's the town's intent to rehire these people after this is all over, if they should decide to take this furlough. Is that?
One hundred percent.
Excellent. Good. Thank you.
And also, Michael, if I may, um, anyone that's currently receiving benefits, our intent is to continue their benefits?
That is correct. Now, again, I, I'm doing this with Meg and we're doing this, is it smart financial decisions? Because we don't know how long this is going to last. At the end of the ninety days, I, I'm not showing a crystal ball for that. We're intending that hopefully they can come back. You know, that'll be up for, for Mr. LaFond, should you work out a contract with him to deal with at that point. But we're, we're putting him in a position to give him a leg up when he comes into this versus a leg down.
And, and I think to Sarah's point, that employees that may choose the voluntary option, I think it's important that they understand that we have every intention of bringing them back on. And it would only be if this crisis gets worse, that there might be any delay in doing so. So that um,
Yep. Thank you.
That's our intention. All right, Michael, move on.
All right. Any, all right. FY twenty, we're all set?
Yep.
Okay. So FY twenty-one, um, at our last meeting, I had mentioned um, that we were going to uh, undo the org chart change uh, for the uh, community living department, and that is going to save about forty thousand dollars in the budget. The intent is with the operational budget is to leave it as is. Um, we have been in discussions with the school department. Um, and both parties uh, are in agreement that, you know, if we're able to have the town meeting on, on June ninth, which hopefully we can, that at that time, uh, the recommendation is to approve the proposed FY twenty-one budget as is. Now, I know, you know, we all know that the revenue projections in that are not going to hold. But the issue is we do not have a crystal ball and enough information to, to say whether that's going to be adjusted two, four, six, eight, nine percent. We just don't know. So by putting the spending freeze in play is that it only deals with essential services at the time. It allows us to save money so that there will have to be a special town meeting next year. I, I foresee that. Um, you know, unless the economy turns around in the next thirty days or sixty days, I foresee there's going to have to be potentially a fall special town meeting, probably in the November timeframe to readjust the budget. Um, again, if the economy turns, then you can probably wait to April, but I'm anticipating that's going to happen. Um, but we can't provide any more information and how to adjust it unless we just put our finger in the air and see where the wind's blowing. And that's not how we do our budget process. So that, that's, that's how we're pursuing the FY twenty-one at, at this particular point. And, and again, this is kind of a policy discussion at this particular point because we just don't know what we don't know, except that we know what's going to change. And there is no guidance, there is no, and nor will there be guidance for another sixty, ninety days on what that potentially could be if that guidance is accurate. So this is the best structure that we could come up with to protect the town for that change and still keep things moving along. So I guess I'm just looking for comments to make sure we're all on board with that philosophy.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, one thing, uh, I know there's a lot of uncertainty in, in the freezes and stuff. I just wanted to find out, and hopefully it's not impacting at all, but is there anything that's impacting uh, the process we're going through on getting that uh, water extension on Plymouth Street for those residents?
I'm glad you asked that because obviously I've told that Facebook has a whole bunch of comments on that. No, the, the Water Street, um, so let me, let me start from the beginning on that. Is that, uh, in the next day or two, we should have a final draft from DEP. Uh, DEP is not going to institute any fine to the town, as I've said before. Um, and with that agreement, uh, we have already hired the engineering firm to go out and design permit and put out construction drawings to build the water line. That water line is a priority. It will go into the April on your town meeting to be paid for out of capital. That will have to occur. There will have to be some adjustments. Um, but that will have to, you know, take precedence over the current um, um, well, we haven't put it together capital budget for FY twenty-one yet, but that will be a priority in the FY twenty-one capital budget. And whether that's paid for out of the capital stabilization funds or it's paid for out of um, um, free cash, if there is any, or whether that's paid out of stabilization funds. Um, there's three different sources, but the primary source would be the capital and debt stabilization fund. So to answer your question, everything I've spoken to, to this afternoon, morning, whatever time it is, you know, as it relates to spending freeze, et cetera, et cetera, has no impact on the water line going in. That's an agreement that we're making with DEP to build that water line.
Okay, thank you very much. I know it was a concern of residents and, and, and my own personal concern because it is something that I consider vitally important. So I'm very glad to hear that. Thank you.
And, and I think the entire board uh, recognizes that that's a top priority and that will be funded uh, uh, under whatever circumstances we find ourselves.
Absolutely.
So again, everything we're talking about has no impact on the water line.
Right, Sarah, next.
Uh, oh, any other questions on the FY twenty-one process from anybody?
I think we all understand that it's fluid and that uh, we'll be, we'll have to make adjustments on the fly. I know you and I spoke about developing scenarios. If it goes one, if we got another month, two months, three months, four months, and you know, it's going to be uh, taking a look at what the revenues actually are coming in and adjusting on the fly. So there's going to have to be a level of flexibility as we move forward. I think the important thing is just making sure that the board is constantly aware of where we're at, what's being contemplated, uh, and making sure that to um, our residents and to employees that everything is completely transparent.
And I think it's important because when we do have that town meeting, you know, my guess is people are probably going to be uncomfortable going into a large venue. So the, the shorter we can keep that, So the the shorter we can keep that and and kind of get everything out in the open ahead of time and continue to provide the transparency we've always done with the budget process. Hopefully, you know, have for a a short town meeting so people can come in and and get out quickly and and but at least show up. All right. So um, let's see, now, um, yesterday, um, the Conservation Commission held a meeting. And I'm going to go over that in a second, but again, just for for everyone who's watching, just for background doing this, is that in two thousand one, two, um, the town voted to um set up this conservation fund and to allocate all chapter lands that was uh rollback taxes to go into this fund. At that time, um, it was a right decision to do. There were no other funding mechanisms in town to properly buy conservation land for conservation purposes. Again, this fund can only be used for conservation land. Um, it it can't be used for buying the land and doing any type of development on that. Um, now today, we have our capital um in debt stabilization fund, we have stabilization funds, we have CPC as other methods that are there. Um, in the last five years, um, the fund has grown about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, primarily due to large payments where solar projects have gone up. Makepeace has made a lot of payments to the town. Um, you know, even going back to when Mike Paddock uh did his uh bog on Route fifty-eight is that he had to pay rollback taxes. Those have created a large sum of money that that again is uh has pushed that account up to six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars um today. And there's, I think, six more projects, if not more, that are in the process of going back for rollback taxes. The 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 Conservation Commission yesterday had, in essence, two discussions. The first was, and a unanimous vote, was to release hu- five hundred thousand dollars of their six sixteen to the town to go directly into the General Stabilization Fund. I'll talk about the process for that because there is a process to do that, but they took the lead and said that that's too much money and we're releasing that 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 amount of money. The second thing that they're doing, and they're going to be doing this over their next few meetings, I think they have a meeting set up for May seventh or eighth, is they're going to discuss, they never anticipated that much money, they think that's too much money, the six sixteen for them to have that can just be voted by five people. Um, and of what you only need three to to vote that out. So they're going to develop their own checks and balances that they're going to propose as to, you know, how they could still have a fund, still do what's necessary, potentially have a cap on how much that fund can grow to. And that checks and balances may be that they make a recommendation mid-year that then goes to the Finance Committee for approval, identical to what Capital Outlay does, where they make a recommendation and it goes to the Finance Committee for approval from their reserve fund. My point being here is that the members of the Conservation Commission recognize that what was done in two thousand two versus where twenty twenty is today is that they need to do some modifications to that. And in essence, they're going to self-police each other and they're going to come back with a recommendation um to the board, to town meeting, to the Finance Committee as to how they want to do that going forward. So that's good. They're taking care of that. But the net result of the meeting was um that they voted unanimously to transfer or actually to request the Board of Selectmen, because here's where we get into the process, is to request the Board of Selectmen to vote to send a letter, to vote to ask the governor to file what's called a governor's bill at the request of the Conservation Commission. The Finance Committee is supposedly going to vote on this, I think, on Monday or Tuesday, and the Board of Selectmen to transfer this five hundred thousand dollars from the Conservation Fund directly into our General Stabilization Fund. That has to be an act of the legislature based upon the way the two thousand two rule was written. So again, when I brought this up at our last meeting, uh, every one of you wanted to find out what the Conservation Commission wanted to do. They have voted that unanimously to move that forward. It was a vote of four to zero. Um, and so now it's on your plate. What I would request the board to do is to uh vote uh to authorize the chairman uh on behalf of the board. Uh, once he's got a vote of concurrence with the Finance Committee, to send that request in to the governor that will be crafted by Town Council specifically to move five hundred thousand dollars from the Conservation Fund directly into the town's General Stabilization Fund.
So moved.
Second.
So, Mr. Chair, I have a question. I have a couple of questions. So by making this a governor's bill to the legislature that essentially keeps us from having to go to town meeting this time to do this?
That's correct. It puts the money i- i- if it goes quickly, which it should, then when we have a town meeting, if town meeting needs to draw money out of that General Stabilization Fund, whether it's in June or whether it's in November, the money will be there.
Okay, and so um, so that leaves
That takes a two-thirds vote, sorry.
Okay, so that leaves um a hundred and sixteen thousand still in that land acquisition fund.
Correct, plus the additional rollbacks that are in the pipeline.
Got it. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I happened to stumble across Channel fifteen uh yesterday afternoon and I was able to watch the ConCon meeting and um as Michael says, you know, they're all fully supportive of it. There was the original question of, or some confusion that was clarified that, you know, does that just leave them with a hundred and sixteen? And everything that's, because the law has not, is not going to be changing, any of the rollback of title of chapter sixty-one is going to keep going into that fund. So that's actually going to be keep increasing, even though we take the five hundred thousand out, so. And they got that idea and they were fully supportive of it. And I'm actually going to be interested to see their follow-up meetings when they uh make the changes whether to put a cap on it or not. But also, they're going to have a full thinking of putting a floor, a minimum that that account can be. So it was a very good meeting to watch. I missed Michael's ball cap. That looked very good yesterday. Yeah, I can, I can concur that they were, the uh, uh, ConCon was fully in support of this.
I have a very much. So um I'm not a hundred percent of taking this money out now. Um, I'd like to keep it into a reserve uh for it that they retain the rights to that money um until we need it. Um, right now, we don't need the money. Um, let's my feeling is if we go forward with this, something be put on there that says, number one, this will be the last money that we use. We have to expend whatever else we have uh first before we start using this. And if we don't use it, it reverts back to uh their account. Um, that's my opinion. I I just want to make sure that they understand that that money is there. And if they come up with a a a low ball cap of the minimum amount and what the maximum amount it can be, and then have some other, if it gets higher than that, then then it goes, that money gets put into the um stabilization fund or gets split up into the other um uh bills that we have.
So Bob, what you're proposing to do actually can't be done um because this is a legislative act that needs to happen and how the money would transfer there. And from a financial standpoint, again, we are in a national pandemic. The ConCon is voted to release this money. They know they're never going to get it back. That's their decision they've done. You are, the town is going to have to tap into its General Stabilization Fund to get through this pandemic. And at the end of the day, this is the taxpayers' money. And what we're doing, it's something you've always advocated for, is give town meeting the right. And that's what we're doing by this. We have to get the legislature to put it in there. But at the end of the day, Bob, it's the town meeting's right. If the town meeting at some point, once they have money in their general stabilization, wants to buy conservation land, they can do that. But it's it's the town meeting's right to do that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could also, the fact that um, yeah, we could hold off doing this, Bob, but the problem is, you know, by the time we know we need it, then you're still going to have to wait another month or two because even expedited, I'm imagining this process is going to take one, maybe two months because we have to get the governor to pu- file the bill, the legislature to approve it. And so it, by the time you, you know, if we wait to the last minute saying, oh, my God, we need to this money now, now we have to go through the process. I think that could, you know, that could cause us more harm than good. Um, I appreciate, you know, wanting to hold off for the last minute, but and as Michael said, they were in full agreement with this. Um, they're still, even though they're giving up, they're still getting more money back into that account again because as these uh solar projects and reba- and the rollbacks for sixty-one continue, they're going to still be keeping the money. So, you know, that fund could go back up by another fifty, hundred thousand over the next six months. You don't know. It's not like, oh, they're stuck at a hundred and sixteen thousand and thirty-two cents. Um, but also, uh, as Michael said, you know, it'll be up to town meeting to figure out where that money goes. So I really don't, I would rather have the money be into our regular stabilization account so that we can, you know, town meeting will be able to make good options as to uh how to spend it if if needed.
And and again, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I think making this move just gives the town more flexibility i- in this, in the pandemic that we're in, not knowing where things are going to go with the economy. I think having more funds available in that stabilization fund just gives us a lot more flexibility in how we are, how we manage the town, so. Um, yeah, and I and I would add that um uh, that I was not going to support this. If it was not supported by the ConCon, I would not have wanted to proceed if it didn't have their support. Uh, and the fact that it does, uh, I'm comfortable moving forward with it. However, to Bob's point, um, I, my uh, my feeling is that as that money goes in there, they should look at that as being um essentially, you know, that that went in there and they, I think, could make the case if they needed that money in the future, that that portion of the stabilization fund was enhanced by the monies that came out of the ConCon. And I think they could make the case to town meeting to access that money if they had cause to do so for what a project that they were working on. Michael, what
Without due respect, Michael went ahead and pointed that out to them, that there are other mechanisms other than just their um conservation account, that if they had a a large purchase or purchase that had a higher than normal amount of money to go to the town and we could use this regular stabilization account and given the fact that they're basically giving us five hundred thousand, I would hope the town would look very favorable on a request like that.
And if I
That's my point.
If if I could, Mr. Chair, too, I I just um, this is a point of clarification. That money, once again, was not intended to actually buy the property. So if you come to the town and say you want to sell your property for a hundred grand, that's not where that money was supposed to come from. That that money in that land acquisition fund was to pay for the three uh appraisals, it was to pay legal fees, it was to pay all these pertinent things because it's very, very hard to get um it's it's hard to buy a piece of land for, you know, a hundred
Sarah, just to jump in, is is that that's not a hundred percent correct? The primary focus by the legislature is for land acquisition.
That's right.
You have, you have to do land acquisition with that fund. Now, as purchasing a land, you can then do some of the legal cost tied into that and the appraisal cost, but you have to do, you can't do appraisal cost if you're not intending to buy land.
I understood that, Michael. That's kind of missing my point. Of course, it's only for conservation land, but my point was that there's probab- I mean, a single-family house lot costs more than a hundred and sixteen grand. So of course you would be using it only for a conservation, a piece of land intended for conservation, but it's those pertinent costs within that purchase that this this fund was intended.
Right, and we have
And I just wanted to say also, if I could, Bob, that I'm 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 kind of, I kind of agree with what you're saying, but I I have to bear in mind that the rollback taxes still can, will continue to go into that fund. And so that makes me feel more comfortable about this. Um.
And if I could just put everything in context, uh, you know, the beginning of my presentation this this morning talked about this being part of that ten percent. And and all of the things we've done for voluntary furloughs and everything is based upon town meeting having the ability of this in its stabilization fund. You know, if this didn't happen, you know, we may be taking a little bit more draconian actions. But because we we're anticipating this to be approved by you, like it was approved by the ConCon and approved by the governor, is this will give the town meeting the option to keep things going?
Michael, what is this going to bring the General Stabilization Fund to uh if this is added to the uh the fund?
So this will bring it to, we got about three point two in there, just under three point two million dollars. This will bring it to three point seven. Uh, plus, we have several under uh other, a a couple hundred thousand dollars in other funds that we could roll up if need be uh to, again, which is how I got to the ten percent of our operating budget.
All right, I I just think it's important to note that uh, so we'll have i- i- in the ballpark of four million dollars available to assist us through this crisis.
Yeah, we'll have ten percent of our revenue.
It should be pointed out that compared to others, other towns around us, we really, because of our fiscal health, are in a position to he- help our employees and residents uh to a better degree than uh some of our neighbors are. So that uh I think that this is where some of our uh fiscal policies to this point in time are really paying off to help us through because that's a rainy day fund and 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 Lord help us, it's 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 raining. It's raining, so. Uh, so we have a motion and a second, if no further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Uh, Michael, anything else?
No, thank you all.
All right, I have a couple of items. Uh, Alan and Bob, do you know your schedules for next week if we want to try to schedule another board meeting?
I'll get it to you tomorrow because I'm working a day shift because I don't know it right off the top of my head.
And Bob, do you have any idea yet?
Um, I have no clue. I'll find out tonight when I come in.
All right, if if both of you could get back to me. Um, of course, that's going to be, I don't want, we don't want to schedule it so we know Mark and Bob have had the opportunity to meet with Mr. LaFawn and uh try to put something together to bring back to us because we want to accomplish that at the same time. So um, Mark and Bob, if you need anything from us, uh, I I, you know, I think it's pretty straightforward. You just go sit down. Uh, and um and I I would suggest to any of the members, if you have any thoughts about uh the contract, maybe contact Bob and Mark to share those with them.
If if you could, Ron or Michael, if you could send me contact information for Mr. LaFawn? And um, and and Bob, obviously, we need to know your schedule before we can schedule a meeting with him.
Yeah, I'll call you later on today.
Okay.
After this meeting, I'll call you.
Great, thank you.
Let me, let me suggest this is uh we'll send an email out to the two of you with Mr. LaFawn's contact information. And then also K and P will assign another council to help with the contract. And they can then, and I'll put them in touch with you directly as well.
Yeah, you might, ma- maybe you could request Dave Jenkins. He did the contract work for you and uh I think we have a lot of comfort with him.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Great.
Or Tim Z- Tim Zevens is a very good one. I'm used to dealing with him with all our units, uh, town contracts, too.
Yes, what K and P likes to do is they like to take the, you bring another attorney in that won't deal with the town on a day-to-day basis.
Dave Jenkins is our contract guy.
That's why they brought Dave in before was because we deal with Tim and Greg on a regular basis. So I would suggest Dave to them when you uh contact them.
Great.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, could we get a copy of um Rick's old contract? And a copy of the contract that we have now um with Mr. Milonowski?
Yes.
Get those uh emailed to us.
The old, the old Carver contract that Mr. LaFawn had?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and then
Mr. Chair, I I actually don't have a copy of either one of those myself. Maybe the whole board could have copies of those.
We'll send them out to everybody.
Thank you.
All right, and then um uh, if, as you contact Mr. LaFawn, you may ask him in anticipation of the meeting to send you some thoughts he has about putting a contract together. So um, all right, uh, I also wanted to, I I wanted to actually thank Mr. Milonowski. Um, he's got one week left working with us. And um, he has uh not slowed down. Uh, he has, he has kept at it. I mean, I just am very, very Uh he has, he has kept at it. I mean, I just am very, very impressed. Uh I think there are other people that might have taken their foot off the gas. Uh but he has been working hard with all uh the uh the department heads to uh try to leave us in the best possible position uh as we make this change. And I know he's promised to work well with uh his successor. So I just wanna thank you, Mr. Melonowski, for uh keeping the foot in the gas. Uh there have been a couple of times I wish you to slow down a little bit. Uh it's uh been an interesting week, but um at the same time, uh it's appreciated that uh you have uh stayed professional and and really worked hard right up to the end. Uh I also want to thank uh uh Chris Gardner out at Area Fifty Eight for helping us out this week and really sort of getting the bugs out of this. I think we'd all agree that the Zoom meetings are really working well. I was sort of surprised Conservation met in person yesterday and I want to suggest perhaps Elaine that we get an email out to the uh all the committees and boards in town to make sure they're aware that they have this option and to contact Area Fifty Eight to set up meetings. Um if, I mean, it is their option if they want to get together, social distancing in person. But this, this is proven to be effective. Uh and I think we need to make sure that all the uh boards and committees in town know that they have this as a viable option uh to keep their meetings going and um so that uh and
One more update on finance that I just recalled.
Okay.
Uh first, just uh thank you for your kind words. Um I do want to say that um you know, the department heads and everything are are what's making this all together. And I think your vote tonight will give them some a level of confidence as to how to move forward. Uh the item I want to bring up is that due to the delay of town meeting, we had had several articles in there to supplement some of the additional funding that we needed to do for the police station tied into that additional fire suppression and also the outbuilding. Uh because town meeting is being pushed off, that creates somewhat of a delay in us moving forward with, you know, some of those projects and executing the contracts. As if I don't have the appropriate funds in, available, then I can't execute a contract. That being said, is that um what we are doing to solve that problem is reached out to the Capital Outlay Committee and have requested them to transfer two hundred thousand dollars out of their capital reserve account to the police station project. Uh that has to be approved by the Finance Committee. Once that's done next week, then that'll allow the final contract to be done to move the fire suppression forward. You know, obviously, this is all related of the town meeting delay. Uh but, you know, again, having the financial policies and the funds set aside, it allows us to keep the the business moving forward uh doing this. Again, it doesn't take any action of the board. I just wanted to make sure the board was aware that there is gonna be a two hundred thousand dollar transfer out of the Capital and Debt Stabilization Reserve into the police station project to move forward with the outbuilding and the fire suppression.
All right, uh I want to thank everyone again. Um as I stated in the email I sent out to you earlier, uh I really appreciate the professionalism uh and the collaborative effort that everyone has put together on this. These are difficult times. And um uh I I think to see the board working this well together and being respectful of each other uh is gonna help us going forward. So thank you all. Uh that ends today's meeting. We will uh host the new meeting as soon as uh Bob and Alan can make us aware of their work schedule for next week. And also Mark and Bob can give us an indication as to when they feel that they may have um been able to uh, they're in a position to bring back a contract for our consideration.
And um Ron, if I may, I want to thank you for reaching out to me. Um and I I think we've worked very well together in this whole um town administrator search process and um I appreciate that.
Well, and 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 thank you, Sarah, because uh you have certainly uh documented and made sure that the entire process was as transparent as it possibly could be, which is important uh as we move forward with this. So thank you all.
You want to thank both, I just want to say I do want to thank the chairman and Sarah for all your work. Uh I know there's a lot of groundwork that was uh put in on this. Yeah, as we move forward and I I really appreciate that effort from both of you who helped us with this process.
Absolutely, yeah, that's the same thing. And uh the amount of documentation, Sarah, was very transparent and very clear and uh certainly, I think, made our job, job a lot easier. So I appreciate everything you both did.
Thank you. I'm I'm glad, glad to hear that. Thanks.
I too. Um thank you, guys, for all your hard work. And Area Fifty Eight, thank you very much for hosting this. I do appreciate that and the residents do too.
Yeah, I think it's it's pretty neat that basically we can meet on Zoom and have it broadcast out. They had to make some capital investments to get the platforms to be able to do that. And they pulled it together quickly in about forty-eight hours.
Yeah.
So that I I, again, as I said the other day, I uh my congratulations to them. This is and of course, since they cover Plington and Halifax too, uh this really helps them uh across the board. So thanks to them. Thank you all. Everyone stay safe. Enjoy your weekend.
Don't we need a motion?
Oh, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'm gonna miss you, Alan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thanks, everyone.
Have a great day.
You too.